All right, welcome everybody. Today is Wednesday, January 8th, 2025. And I'm calling tonight's meeting of the planning board together at 5:03 PM. Have quite a number of things to do tonight. Given that, maybe because at the moment, we do not have any local representatives of DMCT State. What I'm going to suggest we do is defer that agenda item to discussing the marijuana product light manufacturer use to a little bit later in the agenda to just give them an opportunity to show up. I don't think that, you know, it'd be good to have them, but I think we can make the decisions we need to make on our own without them. It would be good if they're able to make it. So we're gonna, so let's move to item three first, which is discussing the new floodplain overlay district bylaw and deciding whether to proceed to a public hearing. So let me just, I'm gonna just share my screen. And I'm going to put this bylaw. We just give you guys an update on where we stand with this bylaw. Since our last meeting, oh, and of course, by the way, I haven't said, I haven't said it. Happy New Year, happy 2025.
Do we reorganize this meeting?
What was that?
Do we have to do the reorganization this meeting?
Do we have to do the what?
The reorganization. Now I'm going to use the chair. Does that tell me?
You know what?
I have no problem with the current status. Do we have to do that every year?
We don't have to do that every year because, and this is something that's been on my list to like formalize our operating procedures. And, you know, maybe with our regular meeting next time, we can just like, I think it's, it would be a good idea in the beginning, every calendar year to do that, at least to, and I would be happy to give up chairmanship, but I'm happy to continue. So maybe this, this is, we'll return to that. But I will continue in the current role for tonight.
As far as I'm concerned, please do that.
Okay, unless anyone has any objection. Okay, hearing though. This, this draft of the bylaw, which is also posted associated with tonight's meeting on our website, is, you know, like, just fumes away from being complete. The statute, the status is that it has been forwarded to town council for review. Town council has, by knowledge, not yet provided any feedback yet to the town about it. I, so, so that's, I'm not super concerned. This is now gone through two state reviews.
Right, and just so people know that they're paying attention, the state's making this to us.
Yes, the state.
That's the reason behind all of this, because it's being applied to the state.
That is correct, yeah. And this, this, just to remind everyone of the history, you know, well, first of all, we started with a state model for this bylaw, so this wasn't just us, whoa, what do we think about this? We worked closely for, what Sarah, like, couple of years seems to me with FERCAG on like taking the state template and, and tailoring it to what was needed and appropriate for Wateley. We got stuck on a couple of issues. Those have since been resolved. And so the state has had done two reviews of this, where I would say they've, each, after each review, they've given me very, you know, kind of no prainer sort of editorial changes, nothing substantive. And they've asked that before a public hearing, they get one more look at it. So the other thing I would say about this, just to point out one other thing about this bylaw. In the last, I'm going to scroll way down into the definitions. Do there, a definition of, I'll put it up, of new construction. All right, this, this definition. So in the second state review, this is not the language, the language that I've highlighted here was not the language in the draft that I submitted after the first state review. Which, and the first state review didn't have any issue with the language we had then. But the second review seemed to pick up that our definition of new construction was not consistent with the FEMA definition of new construction. So the state came back and said, thou shalt use this definition, which is what I've highlighted here. But let me point out the one air, part of this text where Wateley's version, Wateley's version was essentially this, but we modified the following portion of it to include and, to embed an actual date. So if you read this, the effective date of the first floodplain management code regulation, blah, blah, blah. Well, so that's, that's a completely valid, you know, from a legal standpoint, it's completely valid in the abstract. But it creates a burden to users, or shall we say, consumers of this bylaw. And that to know what this effective date is, you have to go and do a bunch of research. That we actually, we in town know what this effective date is. And it's, from our standpoint, it would be, I think the date is like November 14th of 1979, which is when Wateley, when Wateley adopted the first, our very first floodplain protection bylaw. So I'm working with the state to see if they will accept a modification of this new construction definition that makes this effective date explicit in the text. To just remove the burden of looking up that date and, because you just can't easily find that date without a lot of work. So that, you might say, is the last little bit, but it's not substantive and it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be anything that holds us up. So that's, oh, and I've also forwarded this bylaw to FERCAG and asked that they take, you know, one more look, like I'm just, my strategy here is the more eyes on this, the better to make sure that we're getting it right, given how much is involved in getting anything.
Where is the map?
So the map is not publicly posted anywhere.
Okay. How much of town is affected by it?
It is, so, the, the map that applies is an old map that's not available in a digital format yet. In, and this actually reminds me that I need to confirm with the town clerk that the town clerk is in possession of the physical map that residents could inspect. The FEMA is going through a process of updating these maps. I'm, and what I, I think I said last time, is that a draft new map that covers Wateley and this region has been produced, but it's in draft form, not filed. It will have a digital representation.
Yeah.
But it's, for the time being, it's not in effect, and the timetable for it to go into effect cannot be precisely determined, shall we say. It's not likely to happen in 2025. It could happen in 2026. So for the moment, the only map, the FEMA map is this old, I think like 1979 era map.
Are there any rules about this, about the administrator? Who it's going to be, how long the term is, who points them?
Not at all, and.
As a builder? Oh, who am I going to?
Oh, no, no, that is, that is, this has been one of those things where, so there is the designation of a community floodplain administrator, Part D. Lieutenant Wateley hereby designates the community development administrator. This is Erica Looper at present.
That's what's going to be, she's, that matter changed probably won't.
Yep, she's, and, and one of the things, what I can say, well, so by various agreements, this designation is embedded in the bylaw.
She's appointed by the select board?
She's appointed by us.
Okay.
Right?
Select board.
So she's, so she is in place, and one of the things that she expressed interest in when she accepted the position was being in this role. However, no, or one under D. I mean, or really, let me make sure you can see all of the on your screen, almost all of it. This bylaw does not articulate the details of what the forms are going to be and who, what the approval process is going to be. It merely designates our community development administrator to be the floodplain administrator for the town and gives that individual all responsibility for applying the regulations, ensuring that, and all the things enumerated underneath Part D.
So I just have, and maybe we can put this in more. There should be a method for someone to appeal the decision of the floodplain administrator in writing, in this, so they can do that, whether it's the select board or wherever it's going to, because things happen.
Yeah.
And you might be able to appeal it to someone. Townspeople are right to do that. Because everything, things are open to interpretation.
Right, no, I, I get it, I get it. I mean, I think, this is where.
Like when I want to do a driveway, the highway superintendent approves their designs, and then I appeal it to the select board.
Blah, 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 enforcement, any, blah, blah, blah. So there's really nothing about, so what I'll have to investigate is whether, because there are general recourses to appeal, you know, decisions of the zoning board of appeals, because this is essentially a zoning matter.
It is. I mean, if someone wants to appeal one of our decisions, they can go to landlord.
Yes.
And they can go to the green building, they can.
So let me ask that question.
But she's like an employee of the town.
Right.
Hopefully, there's someone between that administrator and court system.
Yeah, so let me, let me take a note.
We should have that right for people to do that. And if they appeal it to, I guess the select board is what makes the most sense to me, but.
It's a good, it's a good point. So let me, let me take an action to look into that. So, well.
I'm good, no worries.
But I guess what I want to do is, that's good to hear. I want to see if either Sarah or Patty have any comments or questions about where we stand on this bylaw or its contents. If I see a, yep, so Sarah, you want, go ahead.
JD, that's a great point, and it should be there. That's that next step. Other than that, yes, let's get this thing moving. So let's hear what, get that brant, find out about what happens if somebody needs to appeal, and then if we can get that in there, and, yeah, get it through council and then get a public meeting on it.
Right, right, okay. Good. Patty, anything? Patty, you may be muted. I don't see a.
Oh, no.
No, she doesn't appear to be muted based on the little microphone icon, but I see lips moving and I hear no sound. And my lip reading has really fallen off. Still nothing, still nothing, just moving lips. You might want to try, I'm just going to try, I guess, come in separately. So where this leads us to next, because we are, we really are kind of now under the gun to get this to town meeting. And let me, even though I know Patty was.
Right, is there any discussions during the post town meetings that you like?
I was just about to talk about the, having a meeting. All right, so, yeah, I was just going to talk about, so we're under the gun. Well, let's just see Patty's come back in the meeting. I hope she can, I guess she was able to hear.
Patty is muted.
She's muted, her video is off. So I'm going to hope that she can hear. So, so I asked Pete about the scheduling of annual town meeting this year. Per our general bylaws, the town needs, you know, is supposed to have a town meeting by honor, honor before like April 29th. So currently, you know, the end of April is the target date for regular annual town meeting. But Pete said, there, you know, there's still some select board discussions, I mean, whether it might get pushed into May, but right now, everybody, the finance committee, other committees are all, should all be working on the assumption that annual town meeting would come on in the end of April. Based on that, and I'm going to see if, I'm going to pause for a moment to see, Patty, I'm guessing you're hearing us. Can you try coming off of mute and see if we can hear you?
You're muted, Patty.
You gotta come off mute, but that looks like you could. No, I still can only see lips moving. The other thing you can do, Patty, if you can't manage to make yourself heard, is, and if you can figure out how to use the Zoom chat feature, you can put comments and questions into chat at the expense of having to do a lot of typing. Or you can also, oh, you seem to come off mute, Patty.
Did we hear you, Patty?
No, 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 no good. You can also maybe try leaving yourself muted through the Zoom and try calling in separately on a phone using the phone number. I sent you the agenda that has phone numbers and all of that. Okay. And if you call in by phone, boy, you'll want to immediately hang up the Zoom. Otherwise, we're going to hear this horrendous echo. Okay, so the reason, so back to, if annual town meeting is, and this is going to relate to the other two items on marijuana product light manufacturer and potentially ADU. If we want to get something into town meeting, Pete, by end of April, roughly the latest we can do a public hearing so that we can get everything into place would be about like the first week of March. And I'm gonna, we're going to revisit this. I'm going to float tonight that we maybe target mid-February for a, for one public hearing.
I'm in Florida the week after Valentine's Day.
The week, yes.
On vacation week, I'm, I'm out, so.
But what about the week that leads to Valentine's?
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, I think we leave that Saturday of Valentine's week.
But maybe if we did something on Wednesday, the 12th. Because I'm one of them.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, that's fine.
But I guess what I wanted to do is, I think, let me confirm or deny the following. I think the consensus on the board tonight is that pending any additional language that might be needed to, to provide an appeals process of some kind, or at least articulate an appeals process, we are comfortable scheduling a public hearing on this floodplain bylaw. And again, and we can have a public hearing and even make non, you know, we can make revisions after or during a public hearing as long as they don't substantially change. Or add, basically, you can't do anything that adds restrictions or makes things harsher other than what's posted. Like you could relax things without running afoul of, but, so I think we would still be safe. Okay, so I'd like to, with that, close on floodplain for the moment, and we'll come later.
Want to see if Patty can give us an input, if she has some?
Happy to. Patty, do you have, so you're in on a phone. If you can unmute on a phone, that's you on your phone. 317. Patty might have to start thinking about joining us in, you know, in town offices.
You're the thing, you can click, ask to unmute.
Well, I know, but on a phone, what does that do? I'll ask the phone to unmute. I can remotely unmute. Was that?
I'm going to try to call her.
The trouble is that, like, I mean, that's going to mess up all the.
Okay.
Audio.
Can we hear you, Patty?
Let's see. She can't, tell you what. Well, you know what we are going to do? I think what, I'll, tell you what, Patty.
Can't hear you on video. Try to unmute your phone, Patty.
I'm going to tell you what, Patty. We're just going to give the number down. Hi Patty, here's what I'm going to do. You can stay on the Zoom call with video, hang up your phone, and I'm going to call you and put you on speaker here. And at least those of us in the room will be able to, should be able to hear you from my speakerphone. Sarah might be a bit of a disadvantage. But here we go. Calling speaker, see if that works. All right. Here you go.
I mean, honestly, I had my headset. I, my, my computer is still talking to me. Couldn't find the chat button. I, I'm coming in, I'm coming in from now on. This is ridiculous. I have another meeting in like half an hour, which is why I decided to zoom in. Not doing it again.
Okay, okay. You understand we're gonna, so are you going to have to leave the meeting prematurely?
No, I'm, I'm going to be in North Hampton. It's a.
Okay, can she, do you have any comments on the floodplain?
Yeah, any comments on the floodplain?
Uh, no, but I liked what JD had to say.
Okay, good. So about appeals. Great. So let's, let's move on. Okay, yeah. So I think what we'll do next, since I, since I see, oh, that's interesting. I'm just thinking about, oh. Yeah, this is the thing. The audio feedback, if, make sure you're, just on your Zoom where your audio is, Patty. Make sure, yeah, but make sure there's no sound coming out of your computer speakers that's then going into your phone and, and doing feedback. So. All right, very good. So that sounds better. Thank you. So what I want to do, think, since I believe that both Jared and Isaac have joined the meeting, I think we'll then go back to the original order, which is discussing the proposed marijuana product light manufacturer use. So while you guys are coming, coming live, I'm off mute. Here's what I want to share with, I'm now sharing on my screen what I believe to be the final, the final draft language of this zoning bylaw amendment proposal. I made, I think, some very minor editorial change, or one or two maybe minor editorial changes that I assure everyone, and this is what's posted, by the way, so both Jared and Isaac could go to the Wateley website, to the link for tonight's meeting on the calendar, and download the same document that I'm looking at. I didn't make any, anything other than simple language changes that don't affect the semantics or meaning of the proposed changes. Even if I might have attempted to change every, every mention of marijuana to chocolate, I did not do that. So it's still near, it's still as it was. This has also been sent to town council for review. I have not yet received any feedback from town council. I'll remind everybody that where we left it at the end of last meeting, we had a interesting presentation by Jared and Isaac. In fact, this language was submitted by them at our last meeting in November. We had a discussion, Jared made a presentation. I will actually remind Jared that it would be great, much appreciated, if you would send us a copy of the slides that you shared during that November 20th meeting. I got the language from Isaac, but I never got the slides. And I think that was helpful to our deliberation and consideration of this proposal. But in November, we agreed that, I think the consensus was that this is in, this language is in final form. We didn't have any suggested changes, but we were going to defer until tonight. You know, give everyone a chance to really think it over, get in touch with their concerns about, or, or lack thereof about this, and then we would try tonight to make a decision about essentially whether or not to move forward to, with this, to a public hearing. And I'll just remind everyone that the process is, just like it would be for floodplain or anything else, we take something to a public hearing, and then once the public hearing is closed, we deliberate, and then we can take a position on whether we recommend this or not to the select board. We're not approving it per se. We would pass it along to the select board with our report, and it would be the select board's decision regarding whether this is placed on a town meeting warrant. Okay, and we've done this kind of thing before. So that's the process. So I guess what I want to do is open the floor, and, I don't know, GD, you're here. I mean, I can, I'll, I'll just ask everybody to say what they are thinking about this. And then I'll give the floor to Jared and, and Isaac to comment or respond. We'll have a conversation.
I, I don't have a problem with this going to a public meeting. And I don't have a problem taking this to town meeting for the people to leave the site.
Okay.
I'm a bit indifferent.
Yeah. I'll, I'll, I'll share my own point of view at the end.
They have a right to present this. They'll state their case to the townspeople, and townspeople will decide.
Okay, very good. Sarah, you?
I think it should be, I would like to hear the greater community's opinion. So yes, public meeting, please.
Okay. Patty?
Yeah, I'm, I can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
Um, I think, yeah, which, that is pretty good. I think they can go their, thinking of this.
Okay. I'll say, you know, really, my own personal view about this is, I think, taking this to a public hearing is the appropriate next step. There's no reason not to. I'm, at the moment, kind of neutral on, I see neither. I'm, at the moment, kind of neutral on, I see neither, um, I see neither harm to the town from approving this, nor do I specifically see much benefit, I see benefit to the proponents. And I don't think that there's anything wrong with proponents coming to the planning board with, uh, recommended changes that would be beneficial to them. And assuming the board were not to conclude that it would be harmful, um, I'm generally, I would echo JD's comment, like, I ultimately like town meeting voters to have their own chance to weigh in about that. So I guess, uh, Jared, Isaac, comments, questions? Yeah, I'll just generally open the floor, I see Isaac coming off mute.
Um, yeah, hi everybody, thanks for having us again. I, I actually, I, I went off mute, um, to prepare for comments, I don't really have anything new to add, we've, we've gone over it. I'm, I mean, I'm looking forward to presenting this proposal to, you know, the broader public. And, you know, I, I think in our, in the last meeting, the slideshow that Jared put together did a pretty good job of demonstrating that the, the category of manufacturing we are talking about is, is not an industrial type of manufacturing, and in fact, to, uh, any casual observer, it, it would look, uh, it would look like a number of uses that are already allowed, um, in the, in the commercial district. And, and yeah, so we'll, we'll make that, uh, you know, we'll, we'll make our case to the public, and I, I, I hope that, uh, I hope they're supportive.
Good, thank you. Jared?
Just echoing Isaac, cause you know, I, I think there's a pretty common sense, uh, path to, um, proposing this to the larger community.
Great, great, so I'll, I'll make a, put a couple of notes out there. So historically, our, you know, Whately's a small town, our public hearings are not often well attended. I mean, I hope that when we schedule this one and we advertise it, that there, that interested parties will attend. I think I, we're, I personally am most interested in hearing from residents within Whately's commercial district. Because really, the only meaningful impact potentially, the extent that there is one in the town is to residents of the commercial district. And since none of us on the board reside in the commercial district, it seems only fair to ensure that such residents who might be impacted, if they have any concerns, have an opportunity to public hearing to voice those concerns. We talked at the last meeting about trying to advertise this, such public hearings as widely as possible. Uh, the, we'll, we'll use the town website and the Facebook page. I've inquired as to when the next Whately Scoop newsletter is going to come out, which is a great resource to reach essentially everybody in town in a print form delivered to your mailbox. Turns out that the next, the closing date for the next issue is March second. Meaning the newsletter wouldn't come out until after March second. Which means it might probably be too late, like, I don't know that we're going to do a, be able to do a public hearing, or wanna wait until after March. I mean, I think, again, the newsletter will come out some days after March second, and then there's delivery and all of that. Just wait, we may not be able to use, effectively use the scoop to advertise a public hearing. But we may be able to use the scoop to raise people's awareness of what we might have decided at a public hearing and start to get information out, whether we wanna schedule, say, a public information session in March after decisions have been made about this and maybe other zoning bylaw changes. Allow people to ask questions before it comes before voters at an annual town meeting, something that might be a good idea.
I think it's the petitioners' responsibility to advertise this, whether through the news media, social media, whatever, to state their claim to terms with people.
It's true, I do feel like as a, because also that whatever public hearing, we're going to use the next public hearing to get comments on not just this, and the more people come to a public hearing, as far as I'm concerned, the better. So I do feel we have a, a burden just to advertise, to make reasonable efforts to raise awareness of our public hearings and that matters of some import are coming before, um, residents of town. So, the other sort of recommendation I would make to the proponents here at DMCTC is that assuming this does reach an annual town meeting, it would be absolutely fair and appropriate for DMCTC to provide their own, um, um, materials in advance at, at public, at town meeting, as well as have the floor to state their case directly to voters. Okay, that's fair.
Yeah.
Uh, and I guess maybe the last comment I'll make to both Isaac and Jared is that I feel the, these two things are entirely consistent. Isaac just made this good point about how what's being proposed here seems, is, seems consistent with other uses in the commercial district. And I feel like I can fully agree with that statement, while still believing that the benef, that there are, having the view that there are no necessary benefits to town, right? You know, I think it's still fair to say there neither harms nor benefits, while agreeing that there's nothing wrong with this and that it's consistent with other uses, that there's no harm to the town from an in, from inconsistencies in our bylaws, except when they do particular harm to, um, residents of the town. So I just didn't wanna, um, leave the proponents with the impression that A, that were the planning board, as it has done in the past, to take no position one way or the other on this bylaw provision. Would not be tanned out to the, the board rejecting it or saying it's, it shouldn't be approved. Just merely that we feel like it's a, a matter for voters collectively to consider. Okay, all right, very good. Then I would, unless there's any other comments from board members or DMCTC, we will, before the, like I said, before tonight's meeting wraps up, we'll put our heads together about dates and scheduling for public hearings. But I think right now the consensus is, this bylaw in its current form as posted will go to a public hearing on a date to be scheduled. Okay, all right, I'm good with that. I don't think we need to vote on that, um, cause we just need to agree that we're gonna do that. Okay, so noted. You good, Isaac? Good, Jared? I'm fine?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, thank you for your time, once again, uh, appreciate it. And, uh, the, the public, just to clarify, the public hearing would be a planning board, public hearing, not a select board, public hearing, correct?
It would be held by the planning board, and, you know, again, to sort of give you, you know, to, to sort of, and, and if you don't wanna hang around, which I would understand until we make these decisions, but I'm imagining that, I, I know that we cannot, we won't be able to pull off a public hearing on anything by our next regular meeting on January twenty ninth. To get all the notices out, blah blah, just can't get that done. Um, but quite likely, if ever, if we would have a quorum of planning board members available, you know, say February twelfth would be possible. You'd be gone for a week, is that correct? And I just would like the board to be decently prepared for maybe even two public hearings in February. And if we get word that the town meeting is going to be pushed beyond the end of April, then that might give us some more running room to, um, hold public hearings more in line with our regular meeting schedule than during irregular meetings.
Yeah, I'm going from fifteenth to the twenty second.
Fifteenth through the twenty second, yeah, but if we did another one, like if we went on the twelfth of February and the twenty sixth of February, those are possible, if, and then, then we would be, get everything done in time to get things over to town meeting.
So then, finally, at the town, when, when we are at a town meeting, if regardless of whether the planning board takes a position of support or takes a neutral position, the, either way, the process is, is gonna be the same, correct, that at the town meeting, there, there'll be a, a vote of residents?
Yeah, the way this is usually gone, the, 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 the SOP you might say for town meeting is that when it comes to any zoning bylaw amendment proposal before town meeting, the planning board is asked, and I usually, I've been the one recently, to, um, basically present and summarize the bylaw change proposal to those present at town meeting. So I will get to, you know, describe it, summarize it, summarize whatever the planning board's position is on it. You know, if we have a, if we recommend for, against it, or neither. And that's what the planning board does, I'm there to answer any questions. But anyone who's present at town meeting, and we would coordinate this in advance, I think you would wanna be present. And we wanna make sure that, say, the town moderator understood that after the planning board made its sort of framing presentation, then you would have an opportunity to present your perspective. And then there would be a kind of the general Q and A that happens at town meeting leading to a vote. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, have a great night, guys.
Thank you very much.
You too, thank you.
Take care.
All right, excellent. All right, next item on the agenda, which is, uh, this is, um, I got a little headspace, so I was, um, able to pull this together somewhat at the last minute. Um, so this is very early, so let me, I did send you all a link to the state page that speaks to accessory dwelling units. And I'm kinda looking at you, actually JD, cause af, you know, tonight, and I'm gonna actually ask that basically everyone on the board, I need as many eyes on this as possible. To, cause what I'd like to do is get, um, a, a zoning bylaw amendment proposal pertaining to accessory dwelling units at this coming town meeting. And I think we can do it.
Yep, I met with the building commissioner today, the assistant building commissioner, Jim Hawkins is unavailable, I met with Jeff Gojin, who is a building commissioner.
Great.
The state has not, they're in the public comment period right now.
Correct.
And they're not getting backside closed till about the, the date that's supposed to be in effect, and they have to issue their final regulations at that point.
Right.
So things are still up in the air, but I will over our, what you brought up with him. And the issue that he and I.
So you showed this text.
To the building commissioner, it was opposite, we're talking about, I just want his feedback.
Wonderful, no, wonderful, no, I'm, I'm in, I'm in.
Cautioned us not to redefine something that's not been defined by the state.
Right.
So if you, there's a case in here, and I've got to find where it says.
Probably my distinction of attached and detached ADUs?
Your definition of what is a two-family dwelling and what isn't. You cannot, don't redefine.
Okay.
I'm not trying to be.
Yeah, I understand.
Don't redefine what a two-family dwelling is, that's accepted by the state to conform to this, we need to use, and I'm trying to find that in the code right now.
Right.
What they call a two-family dwelling.
Okay.
So two, two distinct families used, rent in a building is a two-family dwelling.
Okay.
Is every, right, is every primary residence with an ADU which is a family dwelling?
So.
Or, or is every two-family a base with an ADU, and they get you with a square foot?
Got it, so, so let me just again, take a step back, cause, cause you're already, you're, you're actually like, a little bit jumping ahead. Just, I want people to understand that what I did
Yep.
was looked at the state draft regulations.
Yeah.
I looked per your recommendation at Irving.
Yep.
I looked at the FR, FRPB Franklin Regional Planning Board's recommendation, I looked at Buckland, and I did my best merger of the two.
Yep.
Uh, to come up with what I think we, you know, as a starting point, this is very much at the beginning. And I still haven't, to my satisfaction, addressed all the things that I think are of concern.
Yep.
All right, but I just wanna review with people what's in here, I mean, I sent it to you.
Yep.
Um, and just give you a, we have a few minutes, like, I basically took the state definition of an ADU.
Yep.
So I pulled out their size report, which was built in and put it in later.
Yeah, the.
I didn't change the definition, right? I liked the, the explicit distinction made by one of those two towns
Yep.
between attached and detached ADUs, so that we can refer to them separately instead different criteria based on whether it's attached or detached. There is no state definition of attached or detached, they just speak about accessory dwelling units, and they, they say that they can be attached or detached, but they don't actually create the terms that I have here. Though another town has done that, and got approval when they did that. So, and I will note for, that at present, neither Irving or Buckland's ADU bylaws comply with state guidance. So I used them as a model.
Yeah.
But then tried to fix them so that our version would be compliant, to the best of my understanding, which is still not perfect. All right? So there was a definition of gross floor area in the state regulation, I just copied and pasted it in here. Because I wanted to deal with manufactured homes.
I like that.
I put this definition in, which I pulled off of, uh, I need to find the citation, but a, a, a real reputable source, so we have a definition of manufacturer homes. I used the state definition of principal dwelling. I used the FEMA definition of recreational vehicle, which is also embedded in an identical format in the floodplain by what we just talked about.
Can I, I've been just for a second?
Sure.
Can you go back to small dwelling?
Yes.
So the building inspector told me today.
Yes.
That someone might be inclined to put an ADU in tiny house first, and then build their big house after. You can't do that, you have to build the primary dwelling first, and then the ADU. Otherwise, the primary dwelling is the nine hundred square foot, or half the size of the ADU. So you cannot build the ADU first under this law.
Right.
So he just said, make sure you understand that.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah, so, yeah, so there's a principal dwelling that's gonna have to be there first, before there can be their ADU.
Yep.
Right, so you're not suggesting there's a bug in this draft, it just, this is the implication.
That's what they're saying, yeah, so say you're gonna build your garage with an apartment above it, you're gonna live there for a couple of years, then build your main house?
You can't do.
Your main house is your ADU?
Yeah.
You can't do that.
You can't have an accessory to something that doesn't exist. Okay, makes sense, all right? So I put in these various definitions, and I will note that, just for the benefit of writing.
Yes.
I drafted this as if, that these definitions would be part of the bylaw.
Right.
But in fact, when we get this into real form, we would recommend that all of these definitions be moved into the definition section for all of the zoning bylaws.
We wanna, we wanna make sure that our definitions are equal to the same.
Right.
Same wording of what the state uses to define things.
Correct, all right? So with those definitions, I thought those are the only definitions that I needed to work with. I, I think, again, I forget whether it was Buckland or Irving, but I really liked their statement. I I think again, I forget whether it was Buckland or Irving, but I really liked their statement of purpose. And I basically pretty much copied it cuz I think it accurately reflects why we want ADUs and it speaks to the benefits to residents in these various ways.
Yeah.
Um it's, I wanna just go over the conditions and requirements that I put in. This is a little bit of a, you know, there's a little bit of my own channeling my inner Judy Markland here. And there are going to be areas where I think I I still may not have gotten it right. So I I put the size limits right up front. You know, gross floor area of an ADU shall not be larger than half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling or nine hundred square feet, whichever is small. So that's from the state.
And all of these that you put in here meet the rules of the like that you sent us? The things that prohibited, regulations we can't prohibit.
I believe, right, and this is where I'm going to ask particularly you JD and also Sarah and Patty to look this over, and I'm gonna try to tell you where I think there might be issues with stuff elsewhere in our bylaws. Um but I really need, between now and our next meeting, like some independent reviews of this and sending email to me with any comments or recommendations. And in parallel, I'm I'm having FERCog look at this. So I forwarded this to FERCog. Um I don't think I've yet forwarded this to town council. I forwarded this to Judy Markland.
So it it says right in here, for approval of regulation, owner occupancy, you can't have that.
Right.
Minimum parking.
Right, I'm gonna address minimum park.
Use the regu-, use an occupancy restrictions, unit caps in relationship to the principal dwelling. A requirement in protected ADU be attached or detached from the principal dwelling.
I think I've respected all of that.
Yep.
All right, so one of the things that is a little, that I'm still not, my head isn't straight on, is state law says that they call out this notion of a protected status ADU, such that your first ADU, whether it's an attached ADU or a detached ADU, is allowed by right in a residential district. You gotta have one or the other. And whichever one it is, it's allowed by right. But state law allows for the possibility of more than one ADU on a lot. However, and this is where the state regulations are a little clear, unclear. It seems to say that for there to be more than one ADU on a lot, the additional ADUs are only allowed by special permit. It actually seems to say you must require a special permit for additional ADUs beyond one. And I'm a little puzzled by that, so I may have misunderstood that. But it opened this possibility, so we, it seems to say, I don't think the state law says that a town cannot bar multiple ADUs on a lot.
So it's not a special permit to site plan review? It's a special permit you could set up.
It says site planner, it says special permit, not site plan.
Site planner, site, site, special permit is yes or no.
Right.
Allowed by straight law.
Right. Well, yes, so the first ADU cannot require a special permit. It's allowed as of right. But if you want, you have an ADU.
Yep.
Let's suppose you have an attached ADU, you've modified your principal dwelling, and now there's an ADU contained within it.
Mm-hmm.
And then you think, oh, I got this additional land, I wanna put a second ADU out back. Now, that's not allowed as of right. Once you have one ADU.
Once you have one, okay.
And state law seems to say any additional ADUs must require a special permit, as opposed to may. I, my interpretation, my current interpretation of state rules are that towns are permitted to ban more than one ADU per lot if they so choose.
Okay.
What we cannot do is ban ADUs.
Yep.
Have to always allow one as of right in a residential district.
Yep.
Right? So this is why I have these two conditions. The part one, one ADU per lot. So this is basically to just mimic the state rules, say either one ADU, either attached or detached, may be created on a lot as of right in any residential zoning district, or ignore table of use revenue. Now, here's the thing. Cuz this is about your comment about one and two-family dwellings and redefining. I'm very, and and this is where I'm not sure how to deal with this. We have definitions of multifamily and two-family dwellings in our bylaws, and we have provisions that pertain to both. And I think our intent is to make sure that principal dwelling plus ADU is not subject to the same rules as a two-family dwelling.
So the building inspector told me today, this is his interpretation, if you have an attached ADU, now you have two dwelling units under one roof, it's a two-family dwelling. The rules for building fire separation assemblies, egress, rules for sanitary facilities, having adequate water and plumbing in a kitchen, they're the same thing. So we just have to be careful how we're defining that. It becomes the simplest way is to make a two-family by right in a way.
Okay, so this.
That's the simplest way around it in my mind.
This is one of the conversation.
It gets rid of that, and I may.
Can I ask you? Yeah, go ahead Patty. Go ahead Patty.
Someone come in and talk about the actual. Sorry, there's a wicked echo, right? We are, I'm gonna fix it, I could try to say it.
Yeah, sure, but if we can hear you fine.
Would it be worth it to job building, building constructor, next watch this? Directly, as opposed to getting it, not nothing, what JD.
Sure, I understand, yeah. Yeah, it 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 it's, it's certainly, we can certainly ask, I've tried in the past, and they've often not been available to attend to meetings after hours. Um but we can usually submit requests and get
A letter.
Letter in writing and get an answer from them.
Yep.
I I just think it'd be better, now, again, JD.
Yeah.
I know you start with.
Yeah.
But I think it's a good idea to get it from the voice mount. Uh as as to.
Yeah. But here's, I I I agree. The main concern in the open question, which would again, be helpful if all of us would look in our bylaws that pertain to two-family and multifamily dwellings.
Which requires bigger lots.
Which starts to create other conflicts with state law. Because I don't think state law would allow us. So if what you're saying JD is that a a a principal dwelling modified to include an ADU that would be treated by the building inspector as a two-family dwelling, and then the the building inspector would be required per hour bylaws to treat that as a two-family dwelling and meet all the other requirements in our bylaws that pertain to two-family dwellings, then we would run afoul in a different way.
Because if the lots aren't big enough, but it's allowed by.
Right, so this is why what I was hoping to do, the way I was hoping, hoping, and this would require town council and others to tell me, I was hoping to get around that by saying, as I did in that last sentence, that a lot containing a principal dwelling and one ADU shall not be considered a two-family dwelling as defined in these bylaws. But the, by two, and we're trying to find that actually it's two dwelling units. I I hear you, but but it could.
We can't change the definition.
Cuz what I, what I would be very worried about, especially given our timeline, is that if we have to make major revisions elsewhere in our bylaws addressing two-family and multifamily dwellings.
Right, so so the rabbit hole that we go down with this, right?
Yeah.
Is that if it's a two-family, if a two-family is allowed by right, then there are no aerial limitations that nine hundred square feet or half the size of the the principal dwelling.
Right.
That's what throw out the window.
Right.
That the, for the, for ADU purposes.
Yeah, go ahead Patty.
Uh so, uh uh why are we dependent by a timeline?
Well, okay, so great question. So I'll sort of repeat, this state law goes into effect next month. Um and what that means is that for towns like ours that do not conform to state law, in theory, people can start building and and just bypassing state, the the weight, the zone, the local zoning bylaws that don't conform.
Jim Hawkins, the issue builder, perhaps.
And and so the building commissioner, so if, you know, in March, somebody wants to build an ADU that conforms in a residential district, that conforms to state guidelines, they can, you know, whatever we may want about it. And how the the chance of that happening is not high, given. Well, you disagree.
I think people are gonna jump right on this.
Do you?
Absolutely.
Well, I, my, the feedback I've always gotten was that the costs for septic and so forth are so prohibitive in building cost in general that we're not going to see a surge in ADUs. Yeah, well, but but that's the risk, Patty.
Let let's go with um the assumption that we don't get it done before the state law is in- enacted.
Well, we we definitely, let me be clear Patty. Go ahead, go ahead.
We can still enact our own bylaws through town meeting, as it is, as it pertains to ADUs that may or may not. Uh can we, uh okay, and where did you pick up the federal government? The state can go stricter than the federal government, it cannot go be low to the federal government. Um is it the same with towns and the state? So the state's saying, okay, here's, here are the regulations. Can we go stricter?
No. No, we cannot go stricter.
So but so what we're gonna do is embody what lately wants for ADUs?
Yeah, whatever the the state will allow us to do, cuz the state will say, you you may regulate this, but you may not regulate that.
Okay.
So we're working within those guidelines. The real risk to us is that from the time that the state law goes into effect, until we have an approved bylaw of our own, any areas where we have latitude to regulate, but do not have anything approved will be as if we have not regulated those areas.
I understand. What is that timeframe?
Well, so if we were, so technically, um if we had a bylaw that we were happy with, and we held a public hearing on that bylaw, and we as a planning board, at the, after after closing the public hearing, voted to approve that bylaw, it is considered to be in effect contingently from the date that we vote to approve it, even though it has not reached town meeting or come before voters. All right? What that means is that anyone, it it sort of serves as notice that anyone who now in town who tries to do something that would not conform to the approved bylaw would be at risk of being in violation of it. All right, so it's contingently in effect, but when we vote to approve it. Then what happens, it has to go to town meeting. If town meeting rejects it, well, it's rejected. And then, but if town meeting approves it, you might say that strengthens its effectiveness, but it's still not truly effective until the attorney general's office review and approves it. All right, so, but you might say, so so now the question is, when might that happen? So that's kind of our timeline Patty, right? I would say the soonest we could get a ADU bylaw in place that we are comfortable with, that passes monthly with town council and all of that, um where we can have a public hearing, and who knows what will happen in a public hearing. Uh but if we got through all of those wickets and had something we liked and voted to approve it, then those regulations would be contingently in effect at that point.
Okay, I I thank you, I I have a little bit better understanding about this. Um uh it still didn't, I can be honest, it still did rush it. But um maybe that's the nature. I I, you know, I I was on conservation, nothing's rushed.
Yeah.
In conservation commission, so.
No, I'm with, I'm totally with you, and this, this has been the feedback to the state, like, why did you do this?
Sure it's right. And successful for, for us, I mean, like, I have a uh you know, the the unit over my, over my, not unit, the the law, uh the area over my garage could be dated to an ADU.
Yeah, that's right.
And and it's not going to be, but it could be, uh for whoever buys this house next. So and there are a lot of other people that are in the same situation that I'm.
Right.
So I I'm not trying to do this to make it beneficial for me, because clearly be honest, it's not gonna affect me. But there is something that I that I understand about this. Uh but I wanna make sure it's right, and brains are weak. Um because, you know, the face of, we're kind of.
Yes, yeah, good, so this. And I'll, I I agree that it's rushed, and I would never push at this rate if it weren't for the fact that state created this situation for us by putting on, passing a law that went into effect, you know, in twenty twenty, February twenty twenty five, knowing that many, if not most, cities and towns would not be able to get their bylaws into compliance.
All right, let me ask you this. Is it be amended by law if we were to do something temporarily?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I would, I would assert that, let's not let the perfect be the enemy of the good here. Like, as long as we try to avoid sort of really doing harm, we will have multiple opportunities over time to re- revise bylaws if we discover an error. I mean, we should make our best effort to get this right, and then we can fix it as need be.
So I.
You know, step back to JD.
Yes.
I'm still.
A whole lot more on this than I have, I just you know, having done what I've done for four decades, um in in I I just wanna make sure that what we do today doesn't come back in by our system.
Right, and we're not making any decisions today, right? This is a preliminary conversation.
So I'm still going back to the definitions of what a two-family is.
Yeah.
Accessory dwelling, it's all that stuff. And if you want to have a Patty wants to have a flat lot and build a two-family house that required, meets all the requirements, you can put a two-family, there's no size limitations whatsoever.
Yeah.
Two-family.
Yeah.
But you can also turn your garage into an apartment.
Right.
And your mother can live there, and that's, that's a two-family dwelling.
Yeah.
By definition, so we just gotta be wary of that.
Yeah.
I'm more inclined, Waitley is the only town in FCCIP that doesn't allow two families by right.
Okay.
I wonder, is it cleaner to take one seventy-one dash twenty, two-family, multifamily dwelling units, and make two families allowed by right?
Possibly, but let me remind you that that the difference between an ADU and a general two-family is there are no size limits like this on a two-family.
But a two, a dwelling unit that has an ADU and a house is a two-family. We're going in circles.
I I do understand, right?
So if it's allowed by right, the state's not gonna let us clamp down on this. They're not gonna be able to say like, well, you know, two-family, you need extra twenty thousand square foot lot and seventy-five extra feet of frontage.
Right.
Not projected, it's not gonna go. If we eliminate that, and be like all the other towns in FCCIP.
Okay.
And allow one or two families by right, that solves a lot of the problems. The multifamilies, that's a commercial thing, I get that.
Right.
But that solves a lot of problems.
All right, well, let me, again, I I'm I wanna think about this, I'd love to have a concrete proposal.
Okay.
Based in our bylaws about what we would, for example, need to strike out or chain. Based in our bylaws about what we would, for example, need to strike out or change. To achieve the objective of, say, allowing two family by right in residential district. I still think we're gonna need.
Cause that's what the state is doing, the state is saying.
Yeah.
A one or two family is allowed by right.
Yeah.
That's what they're saying to us.
Well, two family, again, within certain size limits.
Whether it's attached or detached, you can't, you can't require one of the other, it says that, right? In the prohibitive.
Yeah.
Regulations, you can't require that's attached or detached.
That's correct, that's correct.
So if it's attached, it's under one thing, it's a two family dwelling.
Yeah, but if it's detached, we don't have a two family dwelling, we have two, two dwelling units on the same lot.
Yeah, we're still going in circles, but yeah.
Yeah.
I get what you're saying.
Okay.
So by allowing it by right, solves a lot of those problems.
Alright, so think about that.
We also have issues with HOAs where you live.
Right.
I don't know how you guys will tackle that.
Yeah.
And our um, our vacuum protection districts. Where we have density requirements.
Yeah.
Where we kind of pick a lot size, there's some issues there too.
So this is, so like what I'm turn, like, right now. Here for, you know, Wheatley kind of did this in a very, if you look at our bylaws, we had one definition of accessory apartment. One row in the table of use and one mention of accessory apartment in another bylaw relating to short term rentals.
Yeah.
And now we gotta do the right, do it right. But we might be, what I wanna do is figure, like, there might be steps. Like, if I can, if this, something like this could work, like. I believe, you know. There are bigger questions about what Wheatley residents will tolerate when it owns two. And I can't speak to this.
But it doesn't matter if the state is saying, this is what you're doing.
Yeah.
You can't overly regulate it, that's what you're getting.
Go ahead, Patty.
I'm sorry, I'm an engineer and I'm a process reader, I like numbers and I like chunks. Is there any way that, and there's some spreadsheets we could set up to say. This is what we have, this is what the state wants, and this is what we're proposing.
I suppose the answer is yes. This is again where I'm going to put out to all of you.
Yeah.
That this work cannot be all on my shoulders.
I get it, so. I I see this, the state is saying.
So if somebody is gonna, like, here's what I, just to be very clear to everyone here. I'm trying to move this forward.
I get it.
I put a draft out.
You did, yeah.
I pointed out where I think, I wanna make sure you understand where I think gaps are. I welcome all the comments and suggestions and so, yes.
And do you appreciate that, Brad? I I know, but I'm new to this committee.
Right.
Um, this is all brand new to me, um, like, literally all brand new to me. And so me. Looking at, I mean, yeah, I'm an engineer, I'm a, I, you know, I'm a process engineer. And to me, I I, I I'm happy to dig into it, but JD, I'm gonna be here, well, because I don't know. The state said, um. And and what you've done, the building inspector. Really honestly, I can't make an educated decision. Until I see all sides.
And.
And and that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
And sadly, we don't have all the sides, cause the state hasn't decided exactly what it is yet.
Yeah, and we're, they've gone, they've gotten much further down the road than they were, I mean, these new regulations came out within the last month or so.
I mean, is there, is there any? Does anyone want to attain, accept the state regulations for what they are? That's what we're gonna go with and then change one seventy one dash twenty, so it doesn't conflate.
What what's one seventy one dash?
Two family, multifamily dwellings in our zoning bylaws. And we, and we, we just accept it from the state, cause if we try to make it more restrictive, they're gonna strike it down.
So, all I would say is, I'm open to seeing that proposal, it's not clear to me tonight.
Okay.
That. That's fully addresses, that if we did what you're, what I think you're proposing. That also means we don't have to worry about an ADU bylaw.
We're adopted what the state law is.
So, we're gonna go around in circles, good. This is my, until I see it, I have the chance to look at it.
Alright, I can.
So all this, all I wanted tonight is to put this out there, say, what I tried to do is. You know, have so, a provision about one ADU per lot.
Yeah.
I have to put in a provision about multiple ADUs. Assuming that maybe we didn't necessarily want to ban. Additional ADUs above one on a lot. I don't know, I haven't thought about that enough. And again, I tried to hack, if you will.
Yeah, I get it.
Of saying that, well, if we're going to allow them, it's gonna be by special permit. And it'll require site plan review, and I'm not entirely convinced. That the state regulations would allow us to do site review on second and third, et cetera, ADUs. They're very clear, you cannot do site plan reviews for ADUs if you, for first ADU. If you don't also do site reviews for general residential dwellings, which we do not and we will not.
Yeah.
That would just be. Yeah, we'd all be shot on sight, who suggested that, right? Um, but it seems like if, and I think I would have a concern if somebody came, I'm gonna have this, this. Attached ADU and I'm gonna put the second detached ADU on the same lot. Well, I would not only like that second ADU to be subject to special permit. But I would also like it to be subject to site plan review in that case. I just don't know, I believe the state would allow the special permit, I don't know if they would allow the site plan review. Okay, so that's.
Let me ask, let me ask a question, uh, we let, you know, we don't make a decision. Okay, right, we're still welding over the.
Correct.
And the state enacts what they're doing. What they, they propose.
So the state had enacted, yeah.
Yes, we're, you know, we're talking March, okay?
Yes.
Um. At that point. What can we do for Wheatley? To enact our own ADU regulations?
Nothing until we come up with a bylaw that we vote to approve.
You just, you just answered my question.
And there's, and there's nothing that we can do that's more restrictive than state law.
That's right.
So, so we're not necessarily restricted by. Making a decision now before the state enacts their regulations.
That's true too, right? And what, what we've, I think, agreed, we should all understand that state law has been. Approved, state law is in effect, well, state law has been, this, they, it's called the Affordable Homes Act. It was voted by the legislature, it, its provisions go into effect in February, as far as we know. No reason to think otherwise. Alright, from the time they go into effect. ADUs that comply with that new state law may be built bypassing. Any restrictions currently in Wheatley's zoning bylaws, full stop. And and we could, if we advocated our responsibility, we could just let that go indefinitely.
As Patty said earlier about.
I know, and I know that's not what Patty's.
We'll go both, but federal and state.
Yes.
Be more stringent. If state is the ceiling, the most restrictive.
Right, yeah.
All we can do is make it less restrictive.
But no, is that, he did make it more restrictive than the act.
Well, we cannot make, we, if the state says, for example, as the state does, let me give you a concrete example, Patty. The state says that an ADU is defined as being. One half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling or nine hundred square feet, whichever is smaller. Okay, that's their estate definition. We may not. Say, well, in fact, we want them smaller, that it's a quarter of gross floor area or six hundred square feet, whichever is smaller. We may not be more restrictive in that manner. We may, however, be less restrictive, we could say, hey, it could be a thousand square feet or seventy five percent of the gross floor area. Right?
I I guess the thing that I'm trying to make in this whole party is. First of all, do we object to what the state is proposing?
Well, it doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
Cause if we have a different perspective, then we have the ability right now to change that, right?
No.
No.
We don't, again, I mean.
The double R's, pen signed it, that's it.
And this, we don't object, but the state. I I just, again, I feel as though this is rushed and I don't know enough about this. To speak intelligently about it. Um, and and I'm going to defer to you guys.
Yeah, I hear you.
I think if the, if the most.
Trying to get us to put something on the table for town meeting or for a special meeting. Right now, without adequate. Review. Is not responsible for that.
And, and I hear you, so again, the, what I'm trying to do is get review by all of us. Get feedback from town council. Uh, get input from FurCob where they have expertise in this area. Uh, it would be delightful if the state had released, released a model bylaw.
I get it.
But even then, given some of the unique characteristics of Wheatley's existing zoning bylaws and how we regulate two family and multifamily dwellings. Even if there was a state model bylaw that, we might not just be able to plop it in and go with it, right?
I.
We still have to understand our own bylaws.
Please, I'm not trying to be, to take responsibility, I really don't.
And I don't think you are.
You can go to some, your tech breaks on the pretend.
Yeah, yes, no, for any percent, this, I will reiterate that I'm not trying to push this through tonight. This is just like, this is our, we're getting started on this project and we, we all understand that. Until such a time as, well. After the law goes into effect in February, until such a time as we, the planning board. Produce a, and vote to approve a new, you know, one or more zoning amendments. That address the, the situation, then state law prevails and takes precedence over our zoning bylaws. And as long as we're willing and able to allow that to, can persist, then we do.
I would like to say.
What is the, the, what's the thing of that?
So again, I've sent you, I've sent everyone a link. To the mass.gov website that lays out everything about the Affordable Homes Act as it relates to accessory dwelling units. And of course, the Affordable Homes Act is a public law that can be.
Was this supposed to be a law, a bylaw?
I wish I could tell you and I should know the difference.
This could be like seven ACMRs, our state bill code.
Yep.
We, the planning board, cannot amend seven ACMR.
Right, correct.
This is a state law, we cannot amend what they're doing there.
We cannot.
I think we change, make our bylaws existing need that, as opposed to drives a null between.
And I'll, and I'll, again, make the point that the state.
I get it.
The state provides, specifies what we may and may not do.
Yeah.
And it outlines areas where we have latitude to regulate. So it says you cannot be more restrictive than this, but if you wanna regulate that, like, if you wanna regulate. How, whether or not, or how ADUs may be used for short term rentals. You can do that, say it says.
I understand you couldn't use it.
Oh, you can't ban their use for short term rentals, but you can regulate how that's.
There was also, um, area.
As an example.
There was also area exceptions for accessibility.
Yeah, there was, so, so anyway, I'm just gonna, just so you're, I just want you to. I just wanted to review a few more bits of this, so you're aware of things that I was thinking about that need additional eyes and thought.
Yeah.
So, um. Because I was also cognizant of what Wheatley had tried to do in the past. Require this, well, piece about requirements on detached ADUs. Um. Oh, maybe there is this other, here is this. Oh. Or let me, let me just, oh, yes. Here's a key point, this is back to the definite, the way I define an attached ADU. Wheatley had. This attempted to, had taken the position with accessory apartments. That you could not expand an existing structure to make room for an ADU. Whether that was wise or not, that was, you know, what they did, alright? And so I currently reflected that within this definition. To say that an attached ADU. Must lie within the original dimensions of the single family dwelling. Now, we may disagree with that, JD may have a counterproposal, but just understand that. It was the intent of the existing Wheatley bylaw for accessory apartments that. People not be adding one to their buildings, so they can add an ADU. So I think that's open for consideration, go ahead, Patty.
So am I, you can do it.
Feel free.
Uh, so we brought our house back there. I had an attached garage and we made it an attached garage with a. Great room upstairs, which could very easily be made into an ADU.
Yeah.
Uh, it expanded the footprint of our house. Uh, did it do it? A lot, no, but at the same time, it did expand a footprint of that house.
Right.
So. Looking at that, I would say no. Um, as long as they were within the, uh, dimensions, uh, the offsets that are required to the building codes. Which, you know, our garage is.
Mm-hmm.
Um. I I I would have a garage, I would, that simply by personal experience.
Okay.
Um. Because we did move our garage to the south towards Alers. I don't know, Tiger, I haven't seen something like that. Um. So I would say that as long, personally, again. It up for debate, as long as we're lying within the. Boundaries of the building code and the offsets. Um.
The setbacks, yes.
Can make the setbacks.
Boundaries, the boundaries.
Yeah.
And and that, I I I don't. Again, somebody's putting on a garage and that's for an apartment upstairs.
I think it's a fair point, I don't always, as a relative newcomer to Wheatley, I can't say I always. Fully understand why citizens in the past made the, made the decision that they did. Sarah, I'm curious, since you're like now the second longest serving planning board member, do you have any thoughts about? Why this might be the case?
I think these things got piecemealed in, we address one thing at a time, so. I think with this. Having comparisons with the state laws compared to our pieces and hope, I know this is, that's time consuming, but it'd be really good to clean up the whole. Set of bylaws.
Yeah.
Um. We have a lot of conflicting items in here.
There's also a public safety aspect to this. There's a lot of two family houses in Wheatley that are single family that have illegal apartments, they're all over the place. You put a wing on the house and grandma lives in there, announce me to you.
Right.
If you wanna put an addition on your house, right here.
Yeah.
And, oh, it's just a wing, but you're gonna need you will not tell anybody.
Yeah.
But that doesn't have a fire separation assemblies, that doesn't have all of the, the technical things for building safety standpoint that we need.
Okay.
By allowing it by right, it gets rid of all the legal ones.
Oh, okay.
It gets rid of that.
Okay.
So now you have two firewalls between them, you have the working smoke detectors, you have the means of egress in case of fire, cause someone peeked out.
Okay.
I would rather see it allowed by right, done the right way, that conforms to all of the rules that we have in our building code for means of egress, safety. Our separation assemblies, then have something that's put in under cover of darkness. That's being used illegally and have someone's life lost because fire separation assemblies were not maintained, or smoke detectors were working great. Because they're all over town, there's illegal apartments all over.
Okay.
Because we're so restrictive in doing it.
Yeah.
So, okay, hey, you got one, let's make it conforming.
Okay.
It's much safer.
Yeah, again, I'm good with that, I really am. Yeah, again, I'm good with that. I really am. Um, and if, and and I think a lot of, there are artifacts in probably any town zoning bylaws that reflect old fears, biases, whatever.
So like, if Patty wants to make, uh, accessory ADU up there.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Make sure there's a fire door at the bottom, there's an egress stair in the back so someone can get that.
Right.
Make it, make it real, make it real.
So maybe the last couple of things.
I'll do that.
Okay.
But it's right, public safety.
No, I get it. And and you're absolutely right. And I'm just using my house as an example of what could happen.
So I put in a a piece there again, taken from one of the other towns, like, well, that you can't use a manufactured home as a detached ADU. Nothing wrong with that.
By the way, I I'll have to go.
Okay, I think we've had enough.
One of one of minutes before she goes.
Um.
Quick enough.
Uh, we'll have a forum without her to vote a minute. Uh, yeah, so you can, you can leave, so. Well, not to vote on minutes, like, that's like a. Yeah, okay. All right, that sounds good. So everyone's on those, like, like, between that part, we're gonna have our next regular meeting at the end, on our regular date at the end of January. And look for some emails from me about dates. We're gonna make some decisions about dates.
Go through some of this, see if I got some stuff.
And and we're gonna continue having this discussion about this ADU, and I'm gonna, I know J D's gonna do something awesome, alright? So your, your excuse, Patty, I'll just share a few more things.
I agree.
About the audio issues.
Yeah, come and join us in person next time.
It's probably my new puppy barking excessively.
Yeah. Okay, sounds good, all right. Um, so again, I thought that we needed to have something in there that manufactured homes are okay, but are these are mobile homes? And I may strike that because I'm not sure that there's even a valid definition of mobile homes, but I wanted.
Yes, that was my thing. We need a definition of what mobile home, what is a mobile home versus a manufactured home?
Well, we do have a definition of a mobile home in our current bylaws.
Okay.
A home is like a, a frame under it and axles, right? And a manufactured home is on a trailer like a, like a, it's a modular home.
Yeah, it's, yeah, apparently like, and this is where I'm still not sure about the the terminology.
Hmm.
Um, but, but I've seen it so that manufactured homes are formerly known as mobile homes, but there's a difference that a manufactured home has to have this HUD certification on all the pieces and the kind of mobile homes that people got all up in arms out about, you may see down Route five and 10, are not manufactured homes. You know, people got their, their things in a twist over, oh my, they're these shabby-looking mobile home trailer parts, and we don't want none of those things in Watley. But manufactured homes are a whole different ballpark. Alright, so I want to make sure that you use a manufactured home as an ADU, as a detached ADU. But you can't use a recreational vehicle. What we do about, whether there is a distinction about mobile homes to be made here, I don't know. It's an open question. Okay, but, um, for parking requirements, I just want you to make you aware that, um, we we can, and we, we can allow, require like a minimum of one off-street parking space, but only for ADUs that are not within half a mile of a transit station. Alright?
What's the definition of a transit station? A bus stop?
Yeah, a bus stop or anything.
But a bus stop in Watley stops there once a day, maybe?
That was a whole bunch, actually.
Yeah, like the F R T A or anything down five, 10.
They don't stop very often, let me tell you.
Well, what, what, what can I say? This is also sort of state law.
Yeah. Okay, so this is directly from state law.
This is directly from state law that we.
But I'd want to make sure what a, if a transit station equals a bus stop.
Yeah, in fact, state law says it can be a bus stop, a subway stop, you know, a railway station, anything. You know, and I changed the definition of, that I, I think way up in my definitions. I said, maybe I didn't even include a definition. I just basically said, I embedded it right here. I said, uh, you know, within half a mile radius of a transit station operated by a local or regional transit authority. I didn't give a special definition to like a, a transit station.
But that would not be like a senior busing service?
Well, would that be a local transit authority? I don't know.
We'd have to look into it, like, there's a senior bus that you can call and they can pick you up and bring you to appointments.
I think that, again, the intent of state law is that we don't want to require people who are going to reside in an ADU to have to have a parking spot if they're close enough to a transit station, they don't need a call.
I don't know many people who live in Watley who have the luxury of not having a vehicle.
Yeah.
A bus stop works all through my house, so.
Yeah, but, but this, again, state law says
Right.
we do not impose requirements for parking, any requirements for parking spaces if they're within half a mile of a transit station as defined by state law.
So basically, it's a half mile on either side of five and 10?
Probably, probably.
There's a handful stops in five and ten, yeah.
Yeah, probably. Okay? I think things like my design standards thing, I just ripped off from one of the other towns. So there's nothing about state law there. Um, but again, I know that people are concerned that however many ADUs you have, there's adequate sanitary facilities.
I asked the building inspector today, can you take Suzie's bedroom, moved away, graduate from high school years ago, whatever, can you turn that into an office and reclassify it as something else?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah.
You can take the door out, make it a case opening, now it's an office, but there's nothing saying that you can't put the door back up unless someone's relieved.
Right, right, yeah.
I mean, let's hope we.
This comes to, like, could, would it be possible for a homeowner, you had a four-bedroom house? Alright, and a septic size for a four-bedroom house? But there's only one, you know, husband and wife living there, all the kids are gone. And so what they want to do is re-change, re-orient part of their house into an ADU. Um, which with effectively maybe one bedroom. Could they use their, could they get a deed restriction saying that this is now a two-bedroom house instead of a four-bedroom house? So that their existing septic could be adequate for a private principal dwelling and an attached ADU, and it seem possible?
I know, the, my understanding of the title five rules, it goes by number of bedrooms flow per day, but they don't care where the bedrooms come from.
Right, right.
Flow per day that it can take.
Right. But then the point I'm making is that if your septic was based on four bedrooms with a corresponding flow per day, but the actual house really will only have two bedrooms and that kind of flow, and of course, two kitchens.
Yeah.
You know?
Two kitchens, yes.
Yeah.
It's a lot.
Yeah, what do I mean is that it could be a way to not have to put in a lot of extra money into enlarging your septic system.
Yes, you could redefine what some of your goals are.
Yeah.
Take the door off, the hinges.
Right.
Call that, you could do that.
Right.
So.
But still, this part would require that whatever you do, you comply with the state sanitary code, and I think that you have to get something from the Board of Health.
So going back to if we allow two-family by right, then they have to confirm, confirm the building code, fire separation assemblies, the proper sanitary, the proper water, egress, fires, detectors, all of that stuff. They have, by allowing that, they have to follow all of those rules.
Yeah.
Makes it safer community.
Okay. Alright, like, you know, again, huh? Not arguing against it.
Okay.
Alright, and the last thing I'll put out there was that I added this bit about residential use only, that, you know, again, this is open to debate.
Yeah.
Do we wanna, like, it seems like the intent of this Affordable Homes Act and state law is that these ADUs are now, but it's gonna be easier to create these ADUs to expand housing stock. Not to let people create these special units that now they can use for commercial, you know, to put a business in there.
Yeah.
And so I wanted to embed that somewhere, because it seemed like state law would allow us to say that, like, you can, as long as you use these ADUs, whether attached or detached, for residential purposes. But because we allow home occupations, and I'm all for home occupations, I wanted to exclude home occupations from that. That if anyone thinks of a home occupation as a commercial use.
Yeah, look at my building needs a drug. I could take my office space and call it an ADU, have someone live there.
Good.
But it doesn't meet the requirements for accessibility, egress, all those things, but I could do that, and now it's a mixed-use property. It's not longer commercial only, or I could put a HUD house in the back of it. Which was not my site plan review there, it all went over.
Right.
But now it's allowed.
And.
In the commercial zone.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess that's, well, the commercial zone, I guess.
On your table of use, you have two-family, commercial for yes.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, because it's true. AR1, AR2, and commercial are our three residential zoning districts. So, and that makes sense. It's consistent with other things that we've done.
Yeah.
So it's true, right? That starting in March, J D, you can plant, pop, pop the.
I don't want to do that, but.
I know, but you could, right, okay. So I think I've accomplished all I want to accomplish about ADUs tonight.
We discussed.
And and put a plea out, like, like, I think I know the bylaws pretty well, but I can't say I looked carefully at all the stuff about single, two-family and multifamily.
Yeah.
There's this bylaw about short-term rentals that I'm not sure that I, like, is it enough to just change the word, the term accessory apartment used therein to accessory dwelling unit therein, and that we, we're good enough for now? I don't want to suddenly, I don't want this to turn into, we're gonna fix ADUs, and now, oh my God, we have to fix short-term rentals, we have to fix all these problems in our bylaws. Let's try to contain what we do and, you know, not create problems, okay? So I really appreciate if you will, between now and January, um,
I'll work on that.
give this a look and, and I'm happy to work with you outside of this meeting. Like, if you want to bounce ideas off or whatever, alright? Um, like I said, Doug, the master of this was Judy. And, um,
She's doing good.
And, but I'll, I'll do my best to channel and Judy for you.
I'll do, I'll do number five, update some planning board projects.
Okay, update some other planning board projects.
I spoke with Erica Roberson there, is that her?
Yeah, I'm gonna stop sharing.
She does. No updates, last way to put it, on the exit thirty-five committee.
Okay.
She's got stacked this big address.
Okay. Stop sharing. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to find, oh, there's my stop share button. Okay, very good. Alright, so, yeah, the exit thirty-five study committee is a little bit.
Sylvie left and.
Right.
It's Erica's.
And Erica's gonna pick it back up.
Yeah, she's just a lot of play right now, I think.
She does have a lot.
Analysis on the one, I think she just have a lot to play, to plug into.
Yeah, yeah, she's, she's, she's gonna be great, but, you know, she's, and, okay. And I guess the other thing is, um.
Your analysis, community preservation, or between we.
Oh, yeah, anything from C P C, Sarah?
No, we voted on, um, what we're gonna be presenting at uh, town meeting. We went through our applications, so. Uh, town hall, um, roof, the, oh man, pull this out of who knows where, um, the dock at.
Oh, with the, at the, at the beach, yeah.
Yep, and I think there was one more, but it was all within, very much within our budget and not really anything that planning board needed to take a peek at, per se.
Okay. And I sent you all the things from the capital improvement planning committee. We haven't had our meeting yet, but everything seemed like typical for C I P C. Um, you know, we lost our land use assistant again. Bummer. So we're gonna go through that process again of posting a job and doing interviews and so forth. Meanwhile, and, you know, we keep the minutes going.
You have this schedule? That's, are having a problem with?
No, in this case, the one we, Jill, the one we hired for the land use assistant, um, like, soon after she accepted our position, she got some offer she couldn't refuse from the private sector and looked at, couldn't, couldn't do both. So, really kind of a, kind of a bummer. Um, let's, okay, let's do, do you feel like, I, I know I just dropped minutes of the November meeting on you earlier today, because originally I was gonna have Jill do the minutes, and then she didn't.
Do you want to just postpone until next meeting too?
I'm happy to just postpone, unless the two of you, like, I wrote it, so I feel good with it. If you read.
I did read them.
I read them too. You want to vote on it?
I'm fine to vote on them.
Okay, we have a forum, we could just.
I'm making motion to approve the minutes of our meeting. What date was it?
Uh, November twentieth?
November twentieth.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made, seconded, roll call, J D.
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye, and the other two will essentially abstain through absence, and I think, I mean.
On video, Patty said she approved.
Oh, that's true. That's the one, if she didn't, well, I mean, I appreciate it. I, I, I appreciate your willingness to do that at the very last minute. It would be my normal operating procedure, okay? So now what I'd like to do, um, is just, before we wrap up for the night, let's just do a little bit of date talking here. Because I, things are gonna have to get going but on a, before our next meeting. So first, to confirm, we're gonna do our next meeting on our regular schedule on Wednesday, the twenty-ninth of February. And at that meeting, um, well, I honestly, I mean, that will not be a public hearing. Can't pull a public hearing off in time. Here's the, to pull a public hearing off, you know, we would have to have notices, legal notices into the recorder by next Tuesday and the following Tuesday, the, you know, fourteenth and the twenty-first. That would require getting all of that in by like Friday, and I can't quench to you that I would be able to get all of that done. I'd much rather give us a little bit more running room and do a public, agree that we'll do a public hearing on February twelfth, Wednesday, February twelfth. Just look, confirm that I, there's no reason why I can't be there for February twelve. How about you, Sarah?
I believe I have a C P C.
Yeah.
Because those are on the second Wednesday of the month at five.
Well, we have to, because J D couldn't do the nineteenth.
Yeah, in Florida.
I mean, it's.
Right.
I mean.
I've opened any of the.
I mean, if everybody else can, do them up.
I know, we, we could, I mean, I think.
And the other thing is that Alan runs a really quick meeting, so I could probably join a little late.
I mean, we could potentially do a public hearing at six instead of five.
I just turned through things, I'm comfortable with that.
Because the only things that would be on a, at the, at the, this public, this first public hearing would be the floodplain overlay district bylaw.
Yeah.
And the marijuana light manufacturer.
I think we can turn to those in an hour.
Yeah. I think we should.
I think we can.
I think we can. So if we, if we said we would do those two on February twelfth at six P M. Because it would be good to have everyone who's been involved in all these conversations present versus, I mean, we can, we would have a forum without you, Sarah, but it would be great to have you there. So let's try that. And then, so I, that gives. so I, that gives us plenty of time to get the, the legal notices and the letters out to everyone where that would have to go. Then, what we might aim for, well, that's really, at the moment, that's really all we have. I mean, we don't have any bylaw, but if we were, so, so I guess then we'll just see, depending on how things go on the 29th, I guess we make substantial progress on an ADU bylaw such that we'd have something we're happy with, like, it just may not be plausible. But, um, obviously, the worst-case scenario, well, you know, actually, now I can put it, like, because I'm as sensitive to the whole thing about it being rushed as any of us. Um, given the fact that once we, as a planning board, hold a public hearing and vote to approve something, it's contingently in effect. I mean, I mean, yes, it would be ideal if we could get something in for annual town meeting, whether it's April or May, but we can't. And it takes us into March to have a public hearing too late for annual town meeting, we could still do it, or even if it's a public hearing in April, we could still put something into effect intangently, but we might not get it to voters until special town meeting in November. And with enough, you know, then we might just need as a board to do enough of sort of public information sessions in addition to a public hearing to make sure that voters in town don't feel we're slipping things past them at a special town meeting. Does that make sense? Like, normally I wouldn't want to do an ADU bylaw at a special town meeting.
No, I don't want to do that.
But, but I wouldn't want to necessarily wait, even with a contingent thing on the books until 2026 either. So, okay. So, yeah, my ask to both of you is like, focus on our bylaws.
See what I can do.
And pertain to single fam, well, two-family, multifamily, accessory apartments, short-term rentals, those are the things that we intersect with the, the ADU. And keep in mind that the perfect is the enemy of the good, or the good enough.
Our setbacks are gonna limit what we can do on plot size and setbacks and all that stuff. That's what we.
Okay. Alright, then I think, um, my God, it's before 7:00 PM. Are there no other topics that we didn't reasonably anticipate, right? All good? I don't think there's anything else I need to share with you. So, I think I could hear a motion to adjourn. Sarah's mo, making a motion to adjourn?
Definitely.
How do you feel about that motion to adjourn?
I, I agree with Sarah. I make, I accept the motion to adjourn.
Okay, then we are adjourned at 6:56 PM. Amazing, okay. So then, good night, everybody, and I will, um, see you at the end of January. Thank you all again for everything you do for this now, be the planning board. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye now.